If I could have everybody say the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recording in progress.
Holly, or Barb, if you could call the roll, please, and council members, please remember to state your location.
Lanyon.
Present, city of Williamson and Ingham County, Michigan.
Pratt.
Present, city of Williamson, Ingham County.
Bellinger.
Present, city of Williamson, Ingham County.
Weiss.
Present, city of Williamson, Ingham County.
Rhines.
Present, city of Williamson, Ingham County.
Gilroy.
Present, city of Williamson, Ingham County, Michigan.
Smith.
Present, city of Williamson, Ingham County, Michigan.
All right, I am looking for approval of this evening's agenda, if there are no changes that need to be made.
So I move Weiss.
Thank you.
Second, Lanyon.
Thank you. Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Pratt.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Rhines.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
All right, thank you. We also have an opportunity for audience participation. Have we had any audience join us, Holly?
Um, we have a Shelby here right now.
Okay, Shelby, uh, just want to acknowledge you. Was there anything, um, did you have anything for audience participa- participation?
Not today, thank you, though.
Yep, thank you. All right, moving forward, we have our council meeting minutes for February eighth, twenty twenty-one. I'm looking for approval unless there's any changes that need to be made.
I move, we approve, um, council meeting minutes as submitted.
Thank you.
Second Pratt.
Thank you. Uh, Barb, will you call the roll for the council meeting minutes on February eighth, twenty twenty-one?
Bellinger.
Yes, yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Rhines.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
All right, we also have our accounts payable for this evening. Noah, did you have an opportunity to review accounts payable?
Uh, Mayor, yes, I did, and I'd like to thank Corey for responding to the two questions that I had. Um, so with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve checks seven four oh five one dated two one of twenty twenty-one through check seven four one oh four dated two twelve of twenty twenty-one in the total of two hundred and one thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. And I open the floor for any questions on any individual items from council members.
Thank you, Noah.
I'll second, no questions.
Thank you, thank you, Gene. If there's no questions for Noah or for Corey, uh, Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Rhines.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
All right, moving right along, we just have two action items this evening. These are both really great items. Um, I was already uh, able to hear quite a bit about them during our DDA meeting, so, uh, with that being said, I'm going to turn this right over to Corey for, uh, item A, Public Spaces Community Places Grant.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this evening, we are requesting council support to apply for this grant. Uh, this grant is directly tied into our Boardwalk replacement project that the DDA is sponsoring in twenty twenty-one. And as that project has come together, and you know, we've gotten a pretty firm cost estimate, um, we've got about twenty-three thousand dollars, um, that's projected to be over budget. Um, the, the quick and easy answer to get it under budget is to remove one of the proposed overlook decks, uh, which we have done in the estimate, and that gets us back under budget. But in thinking about the project, uh, about a month ago, you heard a presentation from the Garden Club about a proposal to replace the gazebo that's in Old Mill Park by the parking lot. And we also have a commitment from the family and friends of Phyllis Chirico, who passed away, and she was a longtime Garden Club member. Uh, I think she was an inaugural Parks and Rec Commission member here in Williamson. And they're raising money to support the site amenities at Old Mill Park, including benches, picnic tables, trees, um, in her memory, and they've either raised or are close to raising about eight thousand dollars, uh, for that project. And so this Public Spaces Community Places Grant, uh, it's the fundraising grant, kind of like a GoFundMe. And for every dollar that's raised by the local community, the State Economic Development Corporation pitches in a dollar, up to fifty grand, uh, totaling a hundred thousand dollars. And so I want to be clear that we have not yet broached this subject with the Garden Club Board or the Chirico family. Um, I have spoken with John Bowman, who is coordinating the gazebo project for the Garden Club. And you know, he indicated that he thinks there'd be a lot of interest in pursuing this together. Uh, where basically, instead of the Garden Club taking their ten thousand and paying it direct to the gazebo company, they would donate it through this program and then would get an instantaneous ten thousand dollar match, uh, which could then go into other aspects of the site. And so we have some work to do to work with those organizations, um, to get the matches, but I think it's a no-brainer to at least try. Uh, the DDA was on board with that and passed a motion to do so. Um, but since this involves, you know, going out, asking some of our, uh, service organizations and partners, uh, and in residence, basically, uh, to support this, we wanted to make sure that there was support between Parks and Rec, Commission, DDA, and then ultimately City Council to try this. And so, uh, the memo explains a lot more. I'm happy to get into the details, uh, or answer any questions. Uh, but what we're really looking for tonight is just any initial feedback, uh, concerns, and, uh, potentially a motion to support this application on behalf of the DDA.
Thank you, Corey. Um, I'll open it up to questions, but I can tell you, um, DDA was very excited about this because it's an opportunity to, um, continually look for, um, other sources of funding, um, for city improvements that isn't, um, you know, touching tax dollars. And, you know, we have such a great, uh, relationship with a lot of the service organizations. We have some donors in town that I think, um, you know, look for opportunities where they could, um, uh, give money. Uh, so, you know, I think it's, it's a real neat thing that Corey found that he could apply for. So, um, if anybody has questions for Corey, I'll go ahead and open that up. And if there's no questions, then I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve submission of an application to the Public Spaces Community Places Grant Program to support the completion of the Pathway Project and associated site amenities at Old Mill Park.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Dan. Um, one thing I do want to point out, too, that, um, if you didn't read in your memo, and I know Corey put that out there, um, we do not have to apply for the full fifty thousand to have it match fifty thousand. Um, one thing that we talked about in DDA was what was a realistic amount? So if we were to, say, have thirty-five thousand dollars in absolute funds donated, um, combination of, uh, Friends of the Park, or the Garden Club, or service organizations, we would apply for up to that amount that, that we think we can achieve. Um, so that's one thing that I just wanted to, uh, put out there is, um, that we can kind of, um, craft this to what we think is, is achievable with, uh, funds coming into the city and then, um, asking for a match. And if there's no further discussion or questions, I'll go ahead and ask. Oh.
Weiss.
Yes.
Rhines.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, the next, uh, action item is Put Your Town on the Map Grant Competition Resolution. And again, I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Corey. Uh, this was also presented to DDA, uh, at their meeting.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this is the other project that DDA is sponsoring this year, which we have a grant to complete. Uh, this is the, the former car wash site, as many folks that have been around a long time call it. Uh, this is next to the Barbell Club on the west end of downtown. And that while the DDA has the budgeted match of fifteen thousand dollars, uh, we saw this opportunity and want to go for it. Um, if we get third prize, that's ten thousand dollars. First prize is twenty-five thousand dollars. And so the thought process is we could potentially recoup our match by making the pitch that this is a, um, you know, uh, putting our town on the map, which I think we've got a lot of evidence that it would, um, a lot of support from planning documents and things like that, that have been, uh, utilized since the nineteen nineties. And so, um, the DDA passed this, but again, uh, the, the better support we have, uh, the better. And so we're asking for a resolution of support here, and, uh, if, if we're successful, uh, it'll be kind of neat to see some extra money come in that might free up some funds for the Boardwalk project, uh, that the DDA is funding. So even though it's separate, you know, I do see it as all being connected, and, uh, it would help us out if we can get something here.
Great, thank you, Corey. Any questions for Corey? All right, I will look for a motion to move this forward.
Make a motion to approve a resolution of support for the application to the Put Your Town on the Map Grant Competition in support of the downtown water trail hood, trailhead and parking lot project. Rhines.
Thank you.
Second, Lanyon.
Thank you. If there's no other discussion or questions, I'll ask Barb to call the roll.
Rhines.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
All right, that is the conclusion of our action items for this evening. Moving right down our agenda to discussion items, we did not have anything. Uh, there's been no correspondence received, so I will move right along to the department head reports, and we have your memo here, Corey. So I'll go ahead and, and give you the floor for that, and if you'd like to go over that.
Thank you, Mayor, again. Uh, just a couple of quick updates. Uh, it was definitely a Monday in the city of Williamson. Uh, started out the day, came into City Hall, and our heater was not working, so it was about fifty-four degrees in here. Um, fortunately, we got that corrected. Uh, Briggs Mechanical helped us out, thankfully, and, and got us back up. Um, he did note that our HVAC system is thirty-one years old, and then he said it might be time to take a look at that, so we'll be adding that to the list of things to look at. Uh, we had a water main break on Georgia Street, uh, second water main break in two weeks on that street. Uh, we have, not the city, but in the city, on High Street, uh, over on the, the east end. Um, Consumers Energy has been working on a couple gas main, uh, issues over there, and the update from Scott today was that they are replacing a big chunk of that gas main now, kind of on an emergency basis. Um, and that work will probably be happening most of this week. Um, and so there was a, a bit of a disruption last week. I think a couple of houses were asked to ex- or evacuate their homes. Um, but everybody's back now, and they're replacing, I think, what's a ninety, ninety-year-old gas main, uh, for about a full block, uh, for half a block or so down there. Um, and then we had some internet issues at City Hall today, so I'm glad I'm coming through on this okay. Um, and then I did just want to note that, you know, we, we had some, uh, concerns being expressed over the, the tail end of last week and into the weekend about sidewalks, uh, in the downtown. And, uh, I did send out, you know, kind of a comprehensive update to council, uh, just so everybody has a sense of sidewalk maintenance and, uh, what we do and what we don't do as far as sidewalks, you know, in the main downtown, uh, and then in the parks. And, uh, I noted in there that, you know, we, we need to do a better job communicating with our businesses on when we mobilize at the city level and, and deal with downtown sidewalks versus when it's the responsibility of the, uh, adjoining property owner. And so, you know, we have a letter, we haven't sent it out in a couple of years, uh, but we've been updating that, and we'll be getting that out this week. Uh, I say all that, and it's supposed to be, you know, in the forties the rest of the week, so uh, it could be moot at least for the next week or two, but it's still important. We have had a fair amount of turnover. That was a topic at the DDA meeting last week, is that we, we have had a lot of business buildings, uh, change owners in the last year or so. And so, um, we'll get that out and just try to give people a sense of what it is, uh, that their expectations are, and, uh, go from there. So I'm happy to take any questions on any of those things, and if it's about the water main and gas main, I may defer to Scott if there are questions.
Great, thank you, Corey. Um, good work, DPW, on, um, what we don't like to talk about, uh, during this time of year, Scott. So I know you've had a couple. Hopefully, fingers crossed, um, there won't be any more. Um, three's a lucky number, maybe, but, um, Scott, do you want to give us a real quick update on, on what you guys are dealing with right now?
Uh, yeah, it's, uh, well, it's a little extra challenging because we've got a couple of our staff members that are on extended medical leave right now, so that doesn't help. Um, but we've been having, uh, very good fortune with the arrangements that we've made with Stevens Construction and um, Kevin Beck to work with us and assist us as needed as a fill-in basis to some degree, and then also to, um, like Mark has some, the mini excavator that he brings in that, um, is more cost-effective and affordable for the city to have that just for when they need it, instead of us investing in the equipment. Um, it's a very expensive piece of equipment. Uh, but, uh, yeah, the, with the, the really hard frost that we all experience, or the, the cold temperatures that we've experienced the last few weeks, it's really wreaked havoc with the roads and driving the frost down in. Um, I believe that also contributes to consumers and the problems that they've had on High Street. They, in talking with their crews, they find the same thing, that as the frost drives down into the ground, um, and we're finding that it's at least two feet deep throughout most of the road system in town here, um, that it causes pressure changes in those slight shifts in pressure and so forth, uh, on these older mains, gas and, and water, it causes them to, to break and rupture. So, um, their gas main was installed in nineteen twenty-eight. Our water main, that's about three to four feet from their gas main, um, is, was installed in nineteen twenty-seven on High Street, so we're keeping our fingers crossed. They, uh, they're going to replace about mid-block, um, just past the Nazarene Church there towards the east to Mullet Street, and they believe right now that it's going to impact the services of, of ten homes, um, as long as things go well. They had the MPSC on-site today, um, the, the Michigan Public Service Commission, which is their, um, body that regulates them. Um, so it's, there's concern there. They want to make sure things are done right. Um, any questions for me?
Y- yes, Scott, I do want to, uh, confirm that, uh, they are doing a good job out front. Uh, they actually entered our home several times every two hours with meters, and they went down in our basement, they checked other vents. So they were very concerned, uh, but they were very responsive to the community over here. The only thing I don't like is there's lights and hammering and stuff going on twenty-four seven.
Right.
So, other than that, they're, you know, it's, it's moving forward. So, thanks, thanks for your guys' help.
Yeah.
Scott, wha- what would be the anticipation of a completion of that, uh, project?
Yeah, my computer might die. Look at that. There we go. Okay, um, I, they're going to, I believe what they're going to do is put the, uh, gas main in behind the curb in the green space, the tree lawn area. And then they're going to directional drill across to the long side services, roughly half of them, and then the short side ones, um, I, I, I'm not sure if they'll directional drill those or open cut all of that. They might do a little bit of both. Um, currently today, they started doing video work down the city sewers to try and locate where this, the, uh, sanitary sewer leads are at. And they mark those out. So I am working on investigating where a force main goes from the High Street, uh, lift station to see if it runs down through that block. We don't have very good records in, in that era, so we're trying to figure that out. Um, to give you, they believe that they'll be done this week, uh, with the majority of the work. But as this project has continued to be problematic, it won't surprise me if they can't quite hold to that.
Okay, all right, thank you, Scott. Does anybody have any other questions? Noah, thanks for your front row seat report. I know that's, can't be easy, but, um, definitely, uh, you know, having that taken care of is going to benefit, um, those, those residents.
Yeah, and I can, Scott, for you and for Corey, I can take pictures periodically if you want me to send them to your phones. So if that's what you want, I could do that for you guys.
Okay.
All right, thanks, everybody, uh, for, for that. Scott, thanks for being here tonight. We haven't seen you in a while, so I appreciate it. Um, moving along, uh, department report. Chief, how are you doing?
I'm doing great. Good evening, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we sure can, thanks.
Okay, good. Um, just a quick update, uh, everything's still going good. Um, Corey hasn't fired me yet, so that's a plus.
Okay, good.
You're supposed to laugh, Corey. Okay, Corey's not laughing, that's not good.
Hey, we figured that you passed our task for you with the laundry detergent, uh, Band-Aids.
Oh goodness, oh boy, yeah. Um, a, a big thing that we, uh, did last week, there was a Hope Not Handcuffs, uh, press release at St. Thomas Church in East Lansing. Uh, we are one of fourteen partner, um, police departments that have partnered with, uh, this organization. Um, if you haven't heard of Hope Not Handcuffs, it's an alternative to people who are addicted to the opioids, um, heroin, kind of drugs, where i- it's an alternative to being arrested and thrown in jail, get them out of the criminal justice system. So this, uh, this group, um, we're, uh, setting up where we, a person could literally come into the department and say, hey, I need help. And we would make the phone calls to the Hope Not Handcuffs, get one of their angels to come meet with this person and try to help them get into a recovered program that's funded through insurances or other means. So, um, we, the body was going to get that on our Facebook, so the citizens could see that. And we're also trying to get our, uh, social media, uh, platforms up to other means to get it out to, uh, younger generations, so they can see this as well, as an opportunity. Um, that's pretty much it. We're, we're still going strong, and guys are doing good, and, uh, thanks for being nice and quiet.
All right, excellent. Well, thanks for that. That's a great program, I'm glad to hear about it. Um, so, yeah, uh, everybody watch for that on the WPD Facebook page and share it. I mean, the more uh, we can put that out there, I think that's a great opportunity, um, to hopefully help somebody that, that needs help. Thanks, Chief, for that, that's great. Uh, moving along, we've got committee, subcommittee reports. Um, you kind of already heard, uh, what was going on with DDA. So if there's anybody that wants to report out on one of the boards you sit on, if you have something, go ahead, raise your hand. Go ahead, Brandon.
Uh, so Tifa Mett, um, we had one action item, which was, um, continuing the contract with the Cold Storage Distillery, um, at the Ice House. Um, the board, uh, Tifa did approve, um, going forward with the contract, so, um, Corey and the Tifa attorney are going to keep working on that, so hopefully that'll keep progressing rather smoothly. Um, then we can finally get a, a new business in town. So that's, that's the summation of, of Tifa.
Great, well, that's, that's kind of a fun project. You moved over from planning to Tifa, and, and, uh, you've already got some work, uh, you know, to do, so that's, that's great, thank you. And that's exciting, you know, for the Ice House. Um, so, yeah, definitely bring us back more information as it, as it comes forward, because I think everybody's going to be really excited to hear how that, what type of project that's going to be.
Absolutely, will do.
Thank you, Brandon. Anyone else, uh, report from their board meetings? Not seeing any hands go up. I will, uh, go ahead and move forward. Audience participation, did we have anybody else, or anybody that would like to join in? Holly?
We have Shelby still, and John Bradley is here. I don't know if he's here for audience participation, or...
All right, Shelby and John, I, I have this opportunity, if, if there's something you'd like to share with us?
Not at this time, thank you, though.
Thank you, Shelby.
Just checking in.
All right.
He's all right.
All right, thanks, John, appreciate it. Moving along, then, I will go ahead and, uh, go around the board for council member comments. Noah?
Uh, no comments at this time, Mayor, thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, Jeff Weiss?
Nothing, thank you.
All right, Dan Rhines?
Um, I had a couple of quick things. I wanted to thank Scott and the guys with DPW for the, the great job they've been doing with snow removal. I know, um, we've had a, a lot going on the last few weeks with that, and I think they've been doing a really good job of keeping the, the streets clean and everything, and that's been going well, I believe. Um, I also want to comment on, we've, uh, we've all been living in this COVID space for about a year, and it's unprecedented, and the, the city with managing everything with that has been doing great. I think, I think our residents are starting to go a little stir crazy. I've been noticing a trend on some of our social media, some of our community Facebook groups, where we're, we're getting a little stir crazy in there, and I think we can do, do better as a community with some of it. It, um, there's a trend right now with where we see some of our residents may not love what a business is doing, or think a business is not a hundred percent up to par with what they think the COVID standard should be, and they're calling the businesses out publicly and encouraging people to to not shop there. And I would like to encourage our residents to try and be a little graceful towards our businesses at times, and maybe talk to the business before they go on social media and try to stir people up, because we, as a community, want these businesses to survive this, and every, they're operating in an unprecedented space as well. And I bel- I fully believe that all of our businesses are doing the best they can to keep our community safe, keep their, keep their staff safe, and that they're doing the best they can. So if we could, as, as a city, as, as residents, extend a little grace at times, I think that would help, because when we go on social media, there are real when, when, when we go after a business on social media, there can be real repercussions for those businesses, but, so if we could I don't know how many people watch our, uh, watch our meetings online, but I just wanted to put that out. Thanks.
Thank, thanks, Dan. Gene?
I'll wholeheartedly echo what Dan just said, uh, very well spoken and, and put together there. Um, uh, but I don't have anything else.
All right, thank you. Brandon?
Um, nothing, I guess I'd echo. Um, thanks, DPW and Scott, for all your crews. Um, you're doing a great job. Uh, and also thanks to Corey. Um, any questions I've had, especially coming into Tifa pretty hot, um, always there to help. And, uh, actually with this snow removal stuff, it's always, I'm bored keeping us informed, so thanks, Corey, and the rest of, uh, City Hall staff.
Tom?
Nothing for me tonight, thank you.
All right, uh, I'm just going to kind of go ahead and follow up with what, uh, Councilman Rhines, uh, shared. Um, we are coming up on a year. Um, this is something that I think our community has handled very well, but I think we do need to remember that, um, our businesses wouldn't be here without the residents that support them. Uh, we've got two active businesses right now, uh, Jose's and Williamson Barber Shop, where people are actually purchasing um, meals and haircuts in advance, so that if there's anybody out there that needs something like that, uh, they can go. I think this is a trend that's probably going to pick up, um, I would hope. Um, and I would, uh, ask that, yes, we continue to extend grace to one another. Um, this is something nobody has ever had to deal with or live through. And we just have to remember that we're all trying to do our very, very best, um, to keep our businesses open. Um, you know, uh, these people have jobs, they have families, and, um, so we just need to remember that. Um, and remember to treat others with kindness, or the way that you would expect to be treated. Um, it can, it can go a long way, and, uh... Um, it can, it can go a long way. And, uh, again, Scott, great job with your staff. You guys have been up at all hours of the night. As soon as, you know, uh, the snow starts flying, you got, your crew is out there with salt and cleaning and it's so appreciated. You've, you've, I've seen such great comments on social media regarding that, that, um, there's people from other communities that have said that Williamson is fantastic out there. Um, so you keep the bar high and, and it shows and the residents appreciate that. So thank you and please extend that to your staff as well. Um, with that, I will go ahead and I'm looking for a, um, motion. We need to go into closed session regarding collective bargaining is permitted by MCL 15.268C.
So moved, Smith.
Thank you.
Second, Lanyon.
Thank you. Barb, can I have a roll for this, please?
Weiss.
Yes.
Ryan. Ryan.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Just remember to go to breakout room.
Recording stopped.
All right, it looks like we have everybody back with us, uh, going back into open session. And so I'm looking for a motion, uh, for action from closed session, please.
Recording in progress.
Well, I'll give it a try.
All right, thanks.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, 12-hour shift letter of understanding. Uh, Matt, why don't you go ahead and repeat that for me?
Yeah.
Got it, you're all the way there.
Thanks, Jeff, I appreciate, I appreciate your efforts.
That was good, Jeff, you had it. It's just the last piece is to authorize the mayor to sign the documents presented.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you so much. Do we have support?
Second, Lanyon.
All right, great, we have both. All right, if there's no, uh, discussion, um, regarding this motion, I'd like to go ahead and ask Barb for a roll call, please.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
All right, thank you so much, uh, for, uh, getting through the agenda this evening. That wasn't too bad. I, I expected it to go just a little bit longer, but, um, I appreciate it. Uh, one last thing is, you know, we do have, uh, warm temperatures that are coming. However, overnight temperatures are still cold. Please remember that there is no, uh, parking on city streets from 2:00 AM to 5:00 AM. So our great DPW crew can get out there and do the cleaning that they need. And with that, I'm looking to adjourn this meeting at 7:48 PM. Thank you so much.
Good night.
Recording stopped.
Good night.
Good night. Have a good one, everybody.